Justin, are we ready to go?
Oh, it's not.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled Blue Lake City Council meeting of April 23, 2024. And I will call this meeting to order. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. And our first order of business after the flag salute is to establish a quorum of the council.
Mayor Joe.
Here.
We are supposed to have control of the council. County Governor McKay.
Present.
Senator Sefani.
Present.
Governor Edgar.
Here.
Okay, we are here, four of us with one. Yeah, we do have a quorum, though, so we are good there.
She says she's sorry.
Okay.
She's really sick.
Yeah, okay. Well, it's better that people stay away and keep us all safe. And I think we're more aware of that now. All right, we are now on item three, public comment. The public is invited to present petitions, make announcements, or provide other information to the city council that is relevant to the scope of authority of the city of Blue Lake that is not on the agenda. The council may provide up to 15 minutes for this public input session. To assure that each individual presentation is heard, the council may uniformly impose time limitations of three minutes to each individual presentation. The public will be given the opportunity to address items that are on the agenda at the time the council takes up each specific agenda item. Is there anyone here for public comment? Uh, we'll do Tina, Catalina, and then Marty.
Granger.
And it looks like we have two hands on Zoom as well.
Well, this is good. I thought we were being mathly crowded here.
Pull your mic.
Yeah, pull your mic down and.
Yes, hello. And I'm here because of this town square not being here anymore. And I was shocked, and I wrote a little poem about it, and I'd like to read the poem. It's called "No More." What for? No more blossoming trees, no birds and no bees. No more big rocks and flowers with magical powers. No more shiny black benches, so graceful and strong. No more grass beneath my feet on this earth to walk on. No more. What for? With love.
Thank you, Tina. Nicely done. And I was afraid this was going to happen, and maybe we needed to be a little more proactive about explaining that that situation at Town Square was really temporary, although beautiful, and that the new project is going to be even more beautiful, but it was only temporary. Okay, um, Marty, and then we do have two hands on Zoom.
Hi, Marty Granger. Um, I think this is Justin's last time to be recording this. And I just think it's so important that it is recorded, and not only that you have a record for it, but that other people in the community can watch it. I don't know how many people usually tune into it, but it would be interesting to know. And anyway, I know he's mentioned he won't be coming anymore and the price of gas and all this and that, but I was just thinking if we could pay him something, um, you know, maybe he would be willing to come and, and do at least the council meeting. And I mean, you know, $25, $30. I mean, if there's usually five members on the, on the council, if everybody pitched in $5, that would do it. Um, yeah, I just, I just think that we've got to have it. We've got to continue to record this. I'd be willing to pitch in $20 a month. Maybe people in the community would be willing to do that. But one way or another, I think we really need Justin.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, and on Zoom, could you identify the first person, please?
Julie Christie.
Julie Christie.
Julie, are you there?
I don't see her there. Okay, let's take the next. The yellow, it's going yellow. Uh, it was.
Oh, let me turn the TV off.
She doesn't look muted. Well, let's go to the next person. Is that Winona?
Uh, I'm trying.
I think it's all those far end out there. I could barely hear them. I heard them a little bit.
Oh.
Somebody want to try turning the TV up again?
It was a laptop.
Technical difficulties here. I don't know why we can't hear her. Does it have anything to do with the mic thing?
Well, usually when she comes on, she comes on. She doesn't have a little picture there, so I'm wondering if she's just left.
No, her voice thing. Oh, there she is. Julie, can you hear us?
No.
We can't hear her, no. How about Winona? She's right there. Yeah, Winona's there. That's what I'm wondering. Should we try her? Winona, can you hear us? Can you raise your hand if you can hear us?
She can't hear you, no. Um, I see it on kids. So we're not.
And they're not hearing us. I just got a text from Julie, says, "We can hear you, but staff needs to turn their volume up."
Well, they're volume up.
Mm-hmm.
Um, can't hear that.
Yeah, there's something going on with the receiving.
Whoops, that changes that microphone. And then let's put it, um. Okay, so that should put it all on here. And it's not. Yeah, right. I'm not sure what we got going on.
Justin, if I have a project in your speed.
You can run it like it doesn't matter. You don't have it.
In the, in the Zoom setting, is the volume turned up?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There.
I hear something.
Can you hear us now?
Yes. Yes, we can.
Did that work?
Yeah.
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 Yeah, we can hear that.
Okay, go ahead, Julie.
Sounds good? You guys are good?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Um, we knew you guys great tonight, so thank you for figuring that out. Uh, we really appreciate it. I'm in Oklahoma and loving Dr. Smith meetings. Uh, I want to refer to our two prior speakers. Uh, I do, uh, you could see our town square become a little bit of concrete jumble, we'll see how it turns out. And I want to really applaud Justin for everything he's done. And I agree with Marty, if there's anything we can do to help facilitate fun outside of the COVID fund that we're supposed to be helping out recording, I know that Blue Lake will definitely do that. Um, in the meantime, I admit this, I've said this a few times, that I never remember the whole thing that we're going to stop uploading meetings back to some hole. So keep, keeping those uploaded there as an alternative would be awesome. And thank you, guys.
Thank you, Julie. Uh, Winona?
Winona, can you hear us?
Hi, Danielle.
Go ahead, Winona.
Content that you're on the bandwagon, Mr. Sten. Sorry. And for Dan, I appreciate it. He has been, I also would, you know, I came off a couple of years, and he had me to check the $5 to continue this going. I think it is worth, worthwhile and worth the expense. And I'm excited to see Towns Square come together. I think that it makes sense of Michael Obama as he before it gets pretty. Um, I just hope it looks really pretty when it's all set and done. And I just want to say thank you and thank you, Justin, and we appreciate you so much, and you've been just wonderful. And thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Winona. Are there any other public comments?
We have one more, Ken.
Okay.
Doug, Ken, can you hear us? You there, Ken? Hello?
Yes. Yes, we can hear you.
I can hear you now.
Wait, how long? Do you want to tell all the things that I'm writing? Just me running whatever, so I'm definitely just a little bit, maybe. I was just being, you know, um, flash. I'm hard on our best. I know, compared to any of the, what did, or that one, between your team, kids and the training, the Blue Lake Proclamation is not about, not about maybe challenging that. They always think of being called, and it's not the case, to my opinion. And I appreciate that, that you guys give them the sense of that. I'm sorry. Going on while we. Capitol Hill, President P. George Washington, ranging from Congress to the family, not working. And without a good conversation.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Okay, I think we can move on to item four, City of Blue Lake Bike Month proclamation for May 2024. May is National Bike Month, and staff is requesting a proclamation by the mayor and the council to acknowledge our pledge to promote safe, healthy, and fun biking activities in our community. Staff is proposing several bike events throughout the month of May and will announce the activity calendar in conjunction with the release of the proclamation. And we have our proclamation, which I'm very happy to read before or after we pass it, whatever the pleasure is of the council. Go for it. I'm going for it. City of Blue Lake Bike Month. Whereas throughout the month of May, the city of Blue Lake will celebrate biking and the freedom, the joy, and the well-being it imbues within us, as well as the power that more people riding bikes has in making life better for everyone. And whereas throughout this month of May, the residents of Blue Lake and its visitors will experience the joys of bicycling through group rides, educational events, and/or by simply getting out and going somewhere by bike. And whereas bicycling has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, growing the economy of Blue Lake, attracting tourism dollars and local business spending, and reducing pollution. And whereas the city of Blue Lake and our community partners are also promoting the use of the bicycle as both a means of transportation and recreation year-round to attract more visitors to enjoy our local parks and trail systems, as well as restaurants, retail establishments, cultural and scenic attractions. And whereas these groups are also promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education during Bike Month and year-round in an effort to reduce collision, injuries, and fatalities, and improve health and safety for everyone on the road. And therefore, I, Adeline Jones, mayor of Blue Lake, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Blue, Bike Month in Blue Lake, and I urge all residents to join me in this special observance. So we need a motion to pass this, and then, Amanda, you can tell us about some of the bike events going on.
I will move that we pass Bike Month.
I would second that.
Motion made by Elizabeth Kay, seconded by Elise Sefani to, uh.
Have May, May as National Bike Month.
To proclaim May as.
Blue Lake.
Blue Lake Bike Month.
Bike Month.
And is there any further discussion from council? Is there any discussion from audience?
I have a discussion.
Okay.
You went so fast. Didn't have a chance. Well, you're going to tell us what the things are.
Are there hands up, first of all?
I have a little something I'd like to just share that goes along with Bike Month.
Okay, well, let's see. Let's start with our public.
Ken? Did you want to make a comment? Kent Swak, can you hear us? Your turn to speak.
Kent, did you want to speak about Bike Month?
Yeah, I'm a Christian, I'm a biblical, I'm a college, and I'm going to talk to other everything they talk to.
Okay, who can take his hand down, then? His hands up? Okay. They, we can't. They have.
Yep.
Oh, is there a way? Winona, did she have a comment?
Uh, yeah. Hi, yeah, you're, maybe it sounds like we're talking underwater, it's very horrible. So I'm not sure if it's the microphones, or it sounds like whoever's acknowledging you, like me, I can hear them, but I couldn't hear Emily, and so I just wanted to let you know that.
It's really weird, because.
Thank you. So we, these mics aren't.
Will you switch back to the mic?
Uh. Okay.
Should we yell across the room?
Yeah, there we go.
Should we turn these off?
All right, let's.
Oh, that's my recording.
Oh, okay.
Let's move on, then, to, uh, back to the council for some additional comments. Okay, Elizabeth, did you want to make a comment?
Oh, um, I will wait to see what is already planned before I ask questions.
Oh, okay. And Elise, did you want to wait for the activities to be announced by Amanda?
Um, no, I just wanted to share that Red Coast Energy Authority has an e-bike voucher program that was launched recently. And, um, there, anybody can apply for an e-bike voucher. Um, there are bigger vouchers granted to folks that are income-qualified, but anybody can apply, and so I just want to throw that out there because it's Bike Month.
Thank you. Okay, um, and I noticed on my proclamation, it says, "Sign this blank day of May." So maybe that should be switched to April. And I'll, I'll, um, sign the clean copy. All right, um, would you like to announce some of the activities for Bike Month?
Yeah, so, um, there's a lot of activities taking place all across the county, um, and we're trying to kind of coordinate our events with the other agencies that are promoting biking. Um, so we're actively advertising some of the other events, including some planned group rides. Um, uh, Matterver Brewery is sponsoring a bike safety, bike repair event. Uh, we just received a donation to buy bike helmets, um, for kids and adults. Um, so we'll be doing a bike helmet giveaway. Um, and then we usually do something with the school where we promote the kids, um, for a week, trying to ride their bikes to school, um, where we usually do like an ice cream party for, and we usually kind of have them come right by City Hall, um, get a punch, um, from city staff, and then they turn that in. And we usually just end up doing a, a, a big ice cream party for the whole school, um, but to celebrate Bike Month. And then, um, we're also looking at coordinating, um, possibly with RCMBA. They've got some additional activities, and, um, we're looking at possibly doing later in May, uh, maybe like a community bike ride. So, so we'll just be continuously promoting, um, biking activities, whether it's Blue Lake-specific or county-wide, um, just to keep everyone apprised and keep the energy positive about Bike Month for May.
I just want to make sure that we do have a motion and a second, but we haven't had the official vote, so let's go ahead and do that, and then perhaps you would like to make your comment.
I'm good.
Oh, all right. So we had a motion made by Elizabeth Kay, seconded by Elise Sefani, to proclaim, uh, May as Bike Month. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes? And you're good? You wanted to know about the activity?
I was just curious if Bikes There was going to be involved. Do you know them? Melanie? She does Bikes There.
Like what?
I think it's called Bikes There.
Oh.
Okay.
No, but I'd be happy to get some information.
Okay.
Okay, as we move on with a background of, uh, technical difficulties, uh, item five, City of. Okay, please mute yourselves on, on Zoom, please. All right, item five, City of Blue Lake Lemonade Day proclamation, action. General information. Humboldt County has declared June 1st, 2024 as Lemonade Day. This is an opportunity for our local youth to learn valuable lessons regarding business and entrepreneurship. In order to recognize and promote our youthful entrepreneurs, the city is recommending that council proclaim June 1st, 2024 as Lemonade Day in Blue Lake. And I also have a proclamation, which I can read, and then we can pass. Oh, it's shorter than the Bike Month.
It's also May.
And also says May. Yeah, we need to clean that up. All right, City of Blue Lake Lemonade Day 2024, whereas Lemonade Day is a free, community-wide educational event, providing children with the opportunity to learn and apply entrepreneurial thinking and create a foundation for success in the global economy. And whereas Lemonade Day exists to infuse today's youth with the spirit of enterprise, teaching basic business skills necessary to become successful contributing members of the community. And whereas Lemonade Day offers opportunities for families, businesses, schools, youth organizations, neighborhoods, and government agencies to unite for a common purpose, to train the next generation of entrepreneurs. Whereas the city of Blue Lake commends the volunteers and participants of Lemonade Day and extends best wishes for a successful and rewarding event. And now, therefore, I don't think we need those fans after the whereas's. Anyway, now, therefore, I, Adeline Jones, proud to be the mayor of City of Blue Lake, do hereby proclaim June 1st, 2024 as Lemonade Day in Blue Lake. And I urge all residents to join me in this special observance by supporting our community lemonade stance. Okay, so we need a motion.
I'll move that we proclaim June 1st, 2024 as Lemonade Day in Blue Lake.
I second.
Motion made by Elizabeth Kay, seconded by Christopher Edgar, to proclaim June 1st as Lemonade Day. Was there any further discussion from council? Any discussion from staff and anyone from public?
Yes.
So she didn't put in, you know, like, because I was horrified by, oh, she's actually said, my name was on the agenda. And.
With Lemonade Day?
Yeah, and so I tried to hear, because I thought, well, speak or something, so.
Well, you can speak if you wish to.
Speak, tell us about Lemonade Day.
Please, please join us at the microphone and hope that it works.
Hello, testing.
It doesn't really make any noise. It's just recording.
My name's Jeff Whitkizer, and I've been a resident in Blue Lake for now, uh, just trying to figure this out, but 17 years.
Wow.
And I actually grew up here in Humboldt County. I grew up in Eureka, California. Then I moved down to Southern Humboldt. I lived down there 17 years in Southern Humboldt area, then now I've been up here 17 years. So I've been all over this county. And I've got to say, Blue Lake, from my experience, is the last, really, the last safe town that, like, my kids, they can ride their bicycles, they can walk the streets, they can play in front on the street. And back when I was a kid in Eureka, I used to ride my Big Wheel back and forth on the street, on 18th Street and Monroe Avenue, and it was safe back then. Now Eureka's gone, it's gotten really bad. So anyways, and that's pretty much almost a lot of different residential areas in this county. But Blue Lake still has that touch. And so I feel fortunate to be able to reside here. And, um, this Lemonade, National Lemonade Day, that it's a business entrepreneur contest, um, I'm going to make it short and sweet, but once the girls started, it's the very first time we've been doing it now. This will be our fourth year. And when the girls were younger, we did it. And the first year, they made $300. Now, last year, they made, huh? Or $400.
Okay.
But then last year, they made a little over $1,200. Because just in four years, uh, the business entrepreneur guidelines that they have, they, they say you have to make up a name for the business. Then the other thing is you have to keep records of your overhead costs for all the stuff that you, and with this Lemonade stand, like, the girls, we've actually had family members that have joined in on it and have made other items for the Lemonade stand, like, uh, lemonade brownies, cookies, brownies, uh, what's the other one? Lemonade, yep.
Okay.
Lemonade, big pops. My wife's been involved in it, my, uh, grandparents from both sides of the family have been involved in, uncles and aunts. So anyways, that's how the marketing techniques, we've got limited edition collector pens that, that even, I mean, the fan thing has gotten huge. Their fan club has gotten huge each year. It's tripled, quadrupled. So, uh, talk about, um, stimulating the economy, stimulating the young generations on doing business entrepreneur stuff, learning how to start a business, to run it. So talk about stimulating the economy, stimulating the young generations on doing business entrepreneur stuff, learning how to start a business, to run it. It is actually a success story. You want to hear some success stories? This is one of them, believe it or not. I could go on a tangent about my life, like the success story, but I won't. Anyways, I think it's a good thing, so that's the only reason why I came here to speak up on that. I'm not a very. Public savvy type person, I'm not a computer savvy. I'm lucky to run a business because I'm not even business savvy, but I've been managing. So anyways, but the girls are real savvy with this one.
Good, thank you. Can I ask a question? Where will your lemonade stand be, do you know?
So I feel ashamed and I'm a little embarrassed because that question surprised for me, that one took me for a loop there. But anyways, I'll be completely honest, because of the COVID situation. The National Lemonade, Lemonade Day Association, they actually turned it off, banned it for two years because of the COVID situation. Well, we were adamant about it and we, because we had put money into it and energy into it, that we decided to do it anyways. Now, we've had a generous, again, fan, their fan group has populated big time. I don't know if you, somebody might even remember that my girls are known as the Blue Lake Howlers back when they did the Howling.
Yeah.
So that created huge, they got really notoriety even now.
Yes, you do.
Anyways, I didn't mean to go on a tangent on this, but one of the people that support them, they are owners of the Pacific Outfitters. Now, I actually fortunately know partners of it. And they're actually tree clients of mine, well, they too support it. So my brother in Eureka knows the other half the owners. So anyways, simple lemonade, Pacific Outfitters has given us the opportunity to stage there every year. Which if you think about it, they're a very strategic spot.
Yeah.
Because it's right down the intersection of southbound going out and then people even coming in. I'm sorry, northbound, but then also southbound people can see us and we do a big huge display piece.
Oh, okay, you're in Eureka.
Yeah.
So you'll be in Eureka then?
And that's the thing, so that's why I was saying, oh my gosh, that question just threw me for a loop.
Okay.
Because our location is right now being Eureka for the last four years. Now, because this is actually the first time I've ever noticed it being public here in Blue Lake.
You might have to franchise.
But.
Yeah, you may have to delegate and get someone to run something in Blue Lake.
One of the things though, I, I thought maybe would help promote us is when they do a. One time I talked to Mandy about this and I took me for a loop on it because there's an event that goes on over here.
Called Annie and Mary Day?
Well, that's one of them, yes.
Okay, well, there's many, there's many festivals, so keep, you know, keep aware of what's going on because there will be, there would be a fee for sometimes to have us there.
The thing I was talking, yep, and so that part of the past direction to go.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
Lemonade booth.
All right, you guys, so you were the Howlers and I was the lady pulling the bells, church bells. You heard that every night at eight, eight P M, that was me, time for bed, that was the time for bedtime. All right, well, congratulations, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other further discussion from public? Winona, did you want to make a comment or is that impossible? Yes, can you hear me?
Something instead of, this is from the Brown Act. The initial of the agents must ensure the public can remotely hear, visually observe, and address the meeting by means of either a two-way audio visual platform or a two-way telephonic service in a live one half of the meeting. We can't hear you, we can't see you, we don't know what's going on.
We are very sorry.
Putting in the effort to be here and it's really unproductive.
We, you can't see us, I could see us. I see us on Zoom.
Right, you have all kind of the passion, you have to clean any effort. Something needs to be done because it's not okay. This is a reoccurring issue. Thank you.
Thank you, if you can hear me. Okay, Beth.
Can we try bringing that unit closer to where a lot of the speaking is happening and see if that has any effect on the audio?
This unit?
Mm hmm, yeah.
Yeah, it's a wire issue.
I see us, yeah, I'm confused.
I don't understand because.
Wait, can you see the video? Yes, I can. Oh, okay.
Oh.
Then why'd you say you couldn't?
I can see the video, I cannot hear a single thing. Chris, come hang out with me, come sit here and listen to this, be pulling your hair out, man.
Not really, because it doesn't change.
Okay, we're, we're, we're trying to change things up here a little, we're trying to make things better and we sincerely apologize and we take our duties as being completely transparent very seriously.
We don't, we're trying to, we're trying to communicate here and the string of, it's the communication that is, it's awful. Yeah, I do even know what's going on. What's the, it's just because I don't.
So now we have to pay back and start feeding myself.
I'm like, I didn't, I wouldn't believe it, I'm a stranger.
Sorry, this is good.
I have a lot of history with the news of what. That it's not going to work. And, and it's, I'm not trying to attack anybody, but this is frustrating because we're all making sacrifices and want to be here for a reason.
Yeah, you just turned her off.
The slayer on your agendas, talking about that live meetings will be prioritized and that there's technical difficulties.
Okay.
Right, that's true, okay.
You're always reported to.
You guys are reasonable.
No.
Totally reasonable for people to come here, we have problems, well, some people can't come, so.
It's also not required to, it's not required to all.
Well, they don't.
It's not by any means. That was shut down after COVID.
Lost her up again.
My, we need to, to know if you got, depending on where your speakers are. Some of them, it's the computer, it's this phone, so.
This thing's having.
We go there. In the corner. Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much, are you coming back?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. So we still have to take a.
No, we haven't, no, we still have to take a vote, I'm keeping track of it, Christopher, I am, really. The thing is, you have to allow public before you take the vote, so that's why I've been waiting, but I'm in a pattern, I know. Motion made, seconded by you.
Takes time to. Suss out the system.
I think it's.
Okay. We. We need to move on. All right, let's, let's move on. I sincerely apologize and if you do want, if we do connect with our public, we will have you make a comment at that time. We do have a motion and a second on the floor for proclaiming June first as Lemonade Day in Blue Lake. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, it passes four with one absence. Thank you, welcome to our city council meeting. Okay, we are now on item six, Hatchery Road Truck Route Improvement Project. Ninety percent plan presentation by S H N Engineering, discussion in action. The city has received funding from the state of California to design and engineer improvements to the designated truck route from Railroad Avenue to Hatchery Road, ending at the county line at the Mad River Bridge. The city's engineers have been working on the environmental design and engineering of the improvements for several years and the final design is approximately ninety percent complete. Project has been presented to the council, the community, and special interest groups throughout the design and engineering process. Feedback gained from these presentations and meetings has been incorporated into the ninety percent design package. Additional outreach included focused meetings with the industrial user group and the installation of mock-up improvements to determine effectiveness and usability. Comments received have been incorporated into the design being presented and we have our engineer here and representative from S H N, okay?
Yeah, are you guys able to pull it up on this?
Oh, yay, yeah, right, great. Yeah, why don't you introduce yourself and kind of what you do and do a little ad libbing for a couple of minutes here and we will move on.
Okay, I am Jordan Ledke with S H N Engineering, I'm the project engineer for the Hatchery phase of the Blue Lake Truck Route project. I work under Mike Fogut, the city engineer, and we are working on our design, we're currently at our ninety percent design. As you guys may know, we finished the design of the Greenwood phase of the truck route and that's currently out to bid for construction to be built this summer. I presented that a few months ago. And so we are now working on the design for the rest of the truck route, so picking up where Greenwood left off at Railroad Avenue. It goes down Railroad Avenue onto Hatchery, down to the bridge. And we do not have construction funding for this yet, but we do have funding for the design. So we hope to complete the design in the next month or so and then hope, we hope to obtain construction funding in the next few years. So we have been working on, similarly to the Greenwood phase, we have been focusing on ADA accessibility on the sidewalks. Curb ramps, crosswalks, focusing on pedestrian and bicycle safety. And focusing on traffic calming measures to try and slow traffic in the roadway to increase safety for pedestrians and bicycle users. So we have some plans being passed around and on the screen that's double sided, so. I can kind of walk you guys through the layout. So we're pretty sure that, you know, this is going to be the final layout, we're basically just finishing up any final details. And we just wanted to present our design to the city and, you know, give you the opportunity to ask any questions or give any feedback and that kind of stuff. So I will just walk you guys through the design, so on the left side there, starting at the beginning of Railroad Avenue. And we have some traffic calming measures, so the, there will be a new crosswalk right there in the Greenwood phase. So this is going to plug into the crosswalk and have stamped brick median that will be flush, but just some surface treatment in the road. To break up the black asphalt, so people will have to stay in their lane and not take that turn wide in hopes to slow down traffic at that turn. And we also have a series of bulbouts. Some of them, the purpose is to provide a four-foot clear walkway around existing obstructions like utility poles, for example. And so we have a bulbout into the road to provide that, that walkway around the pole. And it also acts as a traffic calming measure to choke down the road visually so that cars slow down. But it's, it's only eight feet wide, so it's no bigger than a parked car there. And then we also have some planters for visual interest and again, traffic calming to break up that eyesight along the road. We have new curb ramps at each intersection, new crosswalks. They bump out where they need to for ADA compliance reasons, but we tried to not bump the curb ramps out any more than what was needed for ADA compliance. So we come through the intersection of Railroad and Hatchery and we plan to do new crosswalks since the existing thermoplastic brick ones are wearing away. We plan to do concrete stamped brick with the white P and R Ts, similar to the crosswalk we designed in the Greenwood phase. And then coming down Hatchery Road, we are making some changes to the intersection of South Railroad, Road where it meets Hatchery. So currently there's kind of, kind of like a left turning lane and a right turning lane from South Railroad onto Hatchery. So we're choking that down to just a single stop that's more perpendicular to Hatchery Road. And we are doing that with paint and painting in a parking space on the road there and painting in the, like, no drive lines each side of the drive lane. And then we are starting up a bike lane after it intersects the Annie and Mary Trail. So we don't have bike lanes along Railroad Avenue because we want to encourage people to use the Annie and Mary Trail, which runs parallel. But after the truck route crosses the Annie and Mary Trail, we do have bike lanes going down Hatchery Road. The intersection of Hatchery and H Street, we are relocating the crosswalk where it's more centered in the curve so that pedestrians can see cars coming both ways and cars can see pedestrians that are within the crosswalk either direction. And we shortened up the crosswalk as much as possible by doing a bulbout curb ramp on the H Street side. And then coming down to the next page down Hatchery, then we have two bike lanes, both sides. We are replacing the sidewalk on the north side where there's an existing sidewalk.
There's no sidewalk there at the moment.
Yeah, also.
Oh, on the south side, okay, I see, on the north side, you're replacing that.
Yes.
But you're not putting a sidewalk on the south side?
No.
Okay.
That'll be a bike lane, yeah.
Okay, continue.
And then, um. Let's see, about midway to Taylor Way, we're adding a speed table on Hatchery Road, right before the turn to get people to slow down before making that turn. We're doing more surface treatment of the stamped brick median through the turn between the drive lane and the bike lane to, again, keep people driving within the lane and protect bikers.
So this speed table, that consists of this brick?
No, sorry, that'll just be a normal speed table.
So it's a speed hump?
Yes.
Okay.
Mm hmm.
Oh, it's a, it's a wide speed, that's why I call it a speed hump. It's a little.
Like this, the tables have a flat spot on top.
Oh. Oh, okay, okay. Thank you, continue.
Yeah, so, and then around, like I said, around that turn, we have the stamped brick between the drive lane and the bike lane to really protect the bike lane through the turn. And then the Taylor Way intersection, we are modifying as well. We are getting rid of the turning gate to move the sidewalk forward so that we can move the crosswalk and stop bar forward towards Hatchery from Taylor. So we really wanted to push that stop bar out as far as possible, still before the crosswalk, to where people would stop there and they could see both directions. We were seeing that with the existing stop being far away from Hatchery because of the turn lane that people were rolling through it. And because they needed to, to see oncoming traffic from the right on Hatchery. So we are eliminating that turn lane to push the sidewalk out, push the crosswalk out, to push the stop bar out. So that people will actually stop before the crosswalk and not roll through the crosswalk. So we are also proposing to relocate a portion of the fence. So we are also proposing to relocate a portion of the fence on the right side. In that vegetation, so, because that was one of the key things also blocking that site distance from people stopping on Taylor Way. Looking right down Hatchery. So we're gonna get rid of that vegetation, relocate that portion of fence. So that once you get to the stop sign, you can see clearly both ways. So you don't need to roll through the crosswalk.
So that's where our sign is currently that says Powers Creek District. Are you promoting, are you promoting getting rid of that vegetation around there? Or moving it, yeah, moving it back or on the other side, or what's the?
That's a good question.
I think there's a lot of opportunity to do something different there now that the district is starting to take a little bit more shape. Um, so that's part of kind of our branding and signage that we're looking at the best locations for that, what that looks like. Um, the biggest thing, this is such a critical point.
Yeah.
Um, there's so much pedestrian, bicycle, equestrian traffic that comes through here. And when you have, you know, these intersections of, you know, uses where you have big gravel trucks rolling through. You know, it's, it's just really, really unsafe. And so we may lose a little bit of that, um, that space. But to accommodate the safe crossing, I think is such a critical, um, installation. That I think it'll, we'll be able to figure out how to work within it and to make a nicer presentation, um, in the future. But we do need to take up a bit of that real estate to just be able to make this happen. It was on, yeah, yeah.
Temporary and it's not looking.
It was looking really overgrown the other day, but it got weed-wiped.
Um, okay.
Can I ask you a question? So you're eliminating, so then that means that that will calm traffic, right? Because when people are turning, the people behind them are going to have to slow down. They're not gonna go like that, hopefully.
Hopefully not that. Is one of the places too that we did a pop-up installation. So we coned off where the new sidewalk would be. We coned off that turn lane to make sure cars and trucks could make that turn and they can.
Yeah, okay. Did you, um, chat with the truck drivers about it?
Yes.
How many different truck drivers did you survey on that?
Well, no, we, we talked with Gary Johnson, we talked with, uh, Kernan, we talked with Green Diamond.
North Fork Lumber as well.
Okay, oh, go ahead. Awkward space where the Annie and Mary Trail comes. And the stop sign is, stops a car so that it is stopped right in the middle of the trail. But there are stop signs on the trail for the, for the bicycles. Is that gonna be changed? Because that's super awkward, I think. Personally, I think that the stop shine, stop sign should be before the Annie and Mary Trail. Even though it's slightly awkward also, but.
If you won't be, that'll be two stop signs then. You'd have to have the intersection also.
Yeah.
Talking about heading into town from Hatchery.
Yeah, she's on the first page.
Yes. Yes, yes, right by the mural. And basically the stop sign puts a car stopped right on the trail.
So, yeah.
Right, well, couldn't the four-way just be, I mean, you can see.
How could you see on the other side of the building?
Yeah, you can see.
Not from that side?
I don't know.
You can't see, um, the other side of the building where the stop sign is.
Yeah. The people at the stop sign? I think you can, it's.
I think one of the things that we really wrestled with with this design is we do have a lot of awkward, um, intersections.
Super awkward.
And, well, that's always been very awkward. If we were able to do things, you know, completely fresh, that would be different. But we, we do have a lot of constraints that we're working within and a lot of different usage, um, coming into, into play at different points in time. So it's not, you know, these designs aren't like a hundred percent of what you would love to have. But, you know, we're not building brand new. We're having to work within, you know, some pretty constrained spaces. Um, and that intersection has been a big problem for all of, I mean, we've walked it, we've marked it, we've, you know, simulated it. We've, you know, tried to figure out the best way to, um, make these improvements. And it's just, there's just a lot of, a lot of things to work around. Um, I think there's, you know, there's always gonna be some issues and some, you know, um. Uh, you know, just constraints that we just can't necessarily get around.
Maybe a sign or something that says, you know. Yeah, because it's just really, to me, so awkward that you actually stop right in the middle of the trail.
Well, you could if there were cars backed up, I would imagine. I think there's about two cars length there before the trail and the stop sign.
Really? Okay, I'll go back over there.
Yeah, I, I bike that all the time. And it's, it's difficult. Um, but, uh, you know, signage would be a good thing, maybe, um, just trail crossing or something like that. Just to notify drivers that there could be bicyclists.
But if you took into the cross intersection and backed around, people would still cut. You figured we wanted to use a speed table, try to slow people down. As we have the stop signs on the trail.
Right, yeah. Yeah.
These additional traffic calming measures that will slow down that intersection is whatever.
That's one of the big factors is, you know, maybe not doing, you know, not being able to do everything we want. But if we can at least slow traffic down through some of this, that makes it that much safer. Um, right now, there's just a lot of areas where people just don't have to slow down. They can cut corners or they can cut spaces. And that just makes, you know, that really unsafe environment.
And we're constrained. I mean, that was where our railroad rideaway was.
Yes.
It's not like we had a lot of choices with that. So, you know, in the old days, there was a train barreling through there. Okay, where are we now? We're over on the second page and it looks pretty straightforward from there to the, uh, bridge, right?
Yeah, so we have some more buffers between the drive lane and the bike lane. We have some raised curved planter areas. So that's more of a hard barrier between the drive lane and the bike lane because we had room to fit it here. Um, and then the road really narrows before the bridge. So we had to go to a combined or shared, um, bike, biking and vehicle roads. We didn't have room for bike lanes all the way to the bridge, so.
All right.
That's it.
Well, thank you very much. Um, any more questions from council?
I'm, um, I have a question about the, this, the bulbout or whatever it is. On, um, where H Street comes into Hatchery, the one that's on the east, east side of, um, of that intersection.
Oh, that, the, okay, on the.
This one?
The lower one, yeah. So that is a mountable concrete, like rock stamped concrete. So that we wanted cars to have to go around. So they'll have to slow down enough to go around that to get onto H Street. But any large trucks that can't make that type of turn, they'll just have to go.
Right.
Drive on top of that, which will also slow them down, so.
So what, what is the, um, goal speed limit for somebody to take that turn? I'm just curious. I drive that, I drive that particular intersection. I'm sorry. Right, so. I mean, I'm just wondering, again, I use that, that route constantly. And so I found that when you had the, um.
We did a pop-up there also, maybe, yeah, maybe you saw that.
Yeah, and I drove around it a bunch of times and I had to slow down to probably, mm, ten miles an hour to make that turn. So that seems to me in an area where the speed limit is twenty-five. Um, when you're asking people to slow to ten to make a turn, that seems kind of excessive to me.
Like you'd go five if you could go slower.
Going through, if you look over here at Railroad, all these, this is all twenty-five through here.
Right.
And all those turns, you can't make a ninety-degree turn at less than.
That's not ninety degrees.
I'm talking about over here on Railroad.
Mm-hmm.
You can't make those turns.
Here.
Ninety degrees.
Really slow down.
Less than ninety degrees. And you're saying you have to slow down to ten? So you're saying it's excessive over here, but it's not excessive over here?
Yeah, so I, I guess, yeah, I think.
I'm not at all sure what.
Is that.
This, this is.
Turning onto a.
So you're trying to turn it into a ninety-degree.
Yeah, yes.
Intersection.
Yeah.
So Hatchery, everyone goes, I mean, we all acknowledge we're speeding on Hatchery. So as you come into town, we're trying to put in mechanisms to slow the traffic down as you're coming from Hatchery, coming from the bridge into town. So that's why we're putting these physical features to help reduce speeds as you, whether you're going onto H Street or. To G or, you know, as Railroad comes around where it splits.
That's what traffic calming is all about.
And that's why we put that little bulbout too, to, again, for pedestrian safety and shorten the amount of distance you have to cross the street. Because a lot of people from town, you know, cross there.
Right.
That's the main way to go through the river, cross it through town. So that's why we put the bulbout as well to narrow that distance and make it safer across.
Very nice. Uh, any other questions from council? Open to the public. Any questions or comments from public? Um, the recommended action for this item is to accept the draft plan. And direct staff to proceed with finalizing and submitting the plan. Yes, I can, Winona, can you hear me? Okay.
Just much right to be involved with anybody else and that's why it's important. So thank you. Elise, thank you for being the only one to ask questions. You, I'm watching the video and I hope you all watch the video too and see how arrogant you all look, glaring at one another, sitting up there, rolling your eyes like children.
Huh.
That's all.
Thank you. Uh, next comment?
Ken, do you have your, do you, did you wanna say something?
Kent, are you able to hear me? Kent, you're on.
Ken, did you wanna speak?
I'm. I'm very well. I'm not. All right, um, so we are accepting the draft plan and directing staff to proceed with finalizing and submitting the plan. If there's no further.
I make a motion to recommend or accept the draft planned and direct staff to proceed with finalizing and submitting the plan.
All second. Motion made by Christopher Edgar, seconded by Elizabeth McKay to accept the draft plan. And direct our staff to proceed with finalizing and submitting the plan. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
It passes.
Thank you. Seven. Review and consider approval of exclusive negotiating agreement. With property that is owned by the city of Blue Lake. And the negotiating parties are the city of Blue Lake and Kenneth and Eisner and Tasha Eisner. The city has been approached by Tasha and Kenneth Eisner regarding the potential purchase and development of. Accessor parcel number zero-two-five dash two-zero-one dash zero-two-one and zero-zero-nine. Known as the City Corporation Yard. Previously, the city council identified an ad hoc committee to work with the Eisners to review a draft ENA. Mandy? ENA?
Oh, exclusive negotiating agreement?
Thank you, exclusive negotiating agreement and to propose any changes to the agreement. The Eisners have accepted the exclusive negotiating agreement as presented. And staff is bringing the agreement to the full council for further consideration. If the council approves the.
ENA.
Yes, ENA. I just don't like abbreviations. The Eisners will have the opportunity to work with city staff on development options. And to further investigate the site for development purposes. The ENA Exclusive Negotiating Agreement.
That provides protection.
Provides protection to the Eisners to pursue development options without the ability of the city to negotiate a sale to another party. Any final purchase and development proposals will be brought back to council for further consideration. The ENA does not bind the city, the city council to a sale. But it does require that the city council exercise, good, exercise good faith in negotiating a final disposition. And the recommended action is to accept the ENA as presented and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. And we have the agreement here. Um, anything further from staff and are the Eisners here this evening?
They were unable to attend, they're out of town.
Oh, okay.
Like we're always juggling our schedules.
Yeah, okay, so, um, it looks like the attorney has had the opportunity to look over this.
Yes.
Uh, agreement and, um, it's in order. And we've discussed this, um, many times. I'm part of the ad hoc committee. So happy to work with the Eisners to see what can be done with this property. Very exciting.
I have an ad hoc.
Okay.
Who else is part of that? Is there any concerns that you guys have to bring to it? So we don't have to, I mean, I've read through most of this.
We haven't met as an ad hoc committee and so we don't have any knowledge about any of this that you don't already have.
Oh, definitely.
Um, I think that as an ad hoc committee, we were supposed to discuss this agreement. But the Eisners, um, accepted it as it already existed. So there were no changes or anything to make. Um, so we're just, um, this was a, an ENA that was used previously, is that correct?
Yeah, this was developed by the city attorney for, um, previous, um, options for.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, so. They brought this to us once before.
Well, it was with another party.
Yeah.
So the names have basic, have, are changed, but the plan is basically the same.
Right, right, so, um, yeah, so then the entire council will be involved in any further discussions, correct?
Yes, so this, um, Eisners basically, um, took the city's draft agreement. And agreed to all the terms presented and those were terms that, um, were recommended by our city attorney. Um, so there, um, wasn't really a need for the ad hoc committee to meet because they didn't propose any changes. Um, so they felt that they could work within this framework. And, um, they actually came in and paid their deposit and we said, well, we'll hold that. But, you know, it has to go back to council for consideration. Um, so they're excited to start moving forward and, um, they've got some ideas. And so this will allow us to now start to kind of formulate some ideas. It allows them to, um, do some more site investigation, look at costs, um, maybe present some, uh, preliminary development plans. Um, for council to consider in the future, uh, whether you consider a potential sale or lease of the property.
So is this two parcels then?
So it's, it's kind of interesting. I believe that it's broken up into two parcels. I believe it's because of, uh, a tax line, um, that comes across that area. Um, otherwise it's, it's re- referenced as two parcels, but, um, in other areas is referenced as a single. So I asked Gary Reese, our city planner, about it and he, um, stated that he felt that it, they broke that up. Because there's some kind of tax line assessment that goes across that required that. So the county assigns the parcels, um, numbers, not the city. So that's just kind of how that came out.
It might have been like an alley or something.
Should have an exhibit.
Yeah, there's one.
Oh, it's at the end.
Very end. Yeah, some, sometimes these properties have like a, um, there was a, an alleyway there or something like that.
And it could have been like previous zoning, um, because it was an old mill site. Maybe it was zoned, this was part of the old machine shop. Maybe a portion of it was zoned something different. So maybe it was taxed differently. Um, but when the city assumed it, um, we've just used it as one parcel, but it is identified as two for that reason.
I guess I don't see the two, the zero-two-five-two-zero-one-oh-two-one. I don't see that as a parcel.
As an, I don't know what's on your exhibit. It just cuts it across.
It goes all the way to Hatchery, that same, that same division across the other parcels too.
So one of those should be zero zero. Oh, it does say zero zero nine there. Zero zero nine and zero one nine should be. Zero two ones. Yeah, zero two one, I think.
Change that to zero one nine and zero zero nine.
Or it should be zero, or is it wrong in this? Is it wrong in the? Where does it have the number in?
It's on your exhibit, has the parcel numbers.
So that's the.
We'll double check the parcel numbers to make sure that those are requested, those reflected.
Yeah, because.
I think it's nineteen and oh nine.
Indicated in the, um. Yeah, in the agreement. So we want to make sure that they're according to how they're registered. Oh, because this is oh two one is over here.
Clear.
Okay, it might have just been, I might have just.
So it should be.
It's those two, that one.
This one and this one, okay? Not this one. Just so we're clear what we're doing here.
Right.
Thank you. Okay. So while we're talking about the parcel.
Yeah.
The stuff that's all over it. What's going to happen with all the, the stuff that's? Is that going to get cleaned up? It's not just going to get like moved.
No, no, no. So, um, one of the, the issues that, that has been discussed with the Eisners is, um, cleanup of the parcel. Um, as you guys know, they own Humboldt Sanitation. So, um, part of, I think what. Might be brought back to council for consideration is, um, looking, if you get to a point where you are considering. A sale of the property, um, that could be something that could be worked through the agreement for them to clean the site. And, you know, have a reduction in the price possibly. So, um, they're very well equipped to, to be able to clean the site. And so we've already been. Working to identify, uh, what items need to go. There's a lot of historical garbage on the site that needs to be taken away. Um, so that's, that's been something that we've been evaluating for a considerable amount of time, knowing that that's one of the more. Um, enticing developable properties in the Powers Creek district if it wasn't a city corporation yard. So that's, that's something that the, um, the Eisners are very well aware of and, um, are, are. Fine taking on as an issue, so.
Is there anything of value there? The metal on the buildings or anything like?
Um, no, we had a historical survey done just to make sure that, um, you know, that we did have the capacity to remove the building. Um, and through that process, you know, it was identified that there's some salvage, um, capacity. But it's going to be really complicated and a lot of the, uh, the salvage wood is, um. Has been treated over the years with different, you know, chemicals and things and, um, it's a. I think someone could go in there and, and, you know, really dig through it to find some items of value, but you know, a lot of times you. You know, sell off that salvage to get the site cleaned up, you know, so it's a trade off, you know, so we'll just have to look and see what's there, but there's a lot of. Uh, it's just a lot of surface, um, material that can be cleaned very easily.
What's the definition of historical garbage?
Um, I would say just materials that have been collected over the years since it's been a city corporation yard for decades, you know, anything that people. Our, our public works guys, anything people leave out on the corner, you know, in their free pile that doesn't. You know, no one picks up. We have to clean that up, um, things that get abandoned. Um, we pick up. Bikes that, you know, have been abandoned or, you know, thrown away. Um, so there's a lot of, you know, just legacy. You know, public works. Crash that, you know, has been accumulating and we do, you know, take it in and then we'll do a big dump. Um, so we have a couple of big dumpsters down there that will separate metals and garbage and things, um, but. You know, it just, it accumulates over time. Things break down. We, there's quite a few old lawn mowers down there that have probably just broken down over the years from parks and recreation. Or, um, you know, just, um. Have, and public works guys are famous for holding on to everything because everything can be parted out and maybe you need. You know, that one bolt or air filter from nineteen seventy four that could fix something. So it's, um. Hard for them to let go of things.
It was a lot worse years ago. We had someone that really liked to.
There's still cats and.
We do, we have, we do have cats and they get, you know, fed regularly and stuff. So I'm sure we'll, we'll figure all of that out too.
Of course, the pressing question is. What is going to happen about our yard waste? When will we, where we, can we bring our yard waste on yard waste?
We'll be able to facilitate all of that as well, so.
It's not always been there. It's been other places too.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Alrighty.
Do we have a motion?
We need, um. We need to accept the E N A as presented and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement as the recommended action, but any other discussion from council is certainly.
Do we have to open it up?
Yes, we absolutely do.
Before we make a motion or?
You can do that first and then we'll open it.
Okay, so moved.
I would second.
Motion made to accept the E N A. As presented and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement made by Elizabeth McKay, seconded by Elise Scafani. Any further discussion from council? Any input from public? Back to council for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? It passes. Four to one absent person. Alright, we are now on item eight. Personal favorite of mine, um. Ordinance number five four four, water deposit policy amendment. The city council directed staff to prepare an amendment to the city's water regulations allowing the return of water deposits. Based upon a demonstrated ability to make an on time. Make on time payments for a period of two years. In order to amend the water regulations, the city must adopt a new ordinance that amends the current municipal code language. Presented is the proposed amending ordinance along with the proposed policy language. Council introduced the ordinance and conducted the first hearing. At the regularly scheduled council meeting. In March. The second reading will take place at the April twenty third meeting and the language will go into effect thirty days from the date of adoption. And we have our ordinance number five four four. Which will allow water deposits to be returned to customers based upon a demonstrated ability to make timely payments. There will be a thirty dollar. Fee for administering costs, but other than that. We do have an ordinance here before us. And this would be the second reading and the adoption. Is there any further questions or comments from council? This is a fund that's pretty much been rotating, so it's, it's there for us to use. Any comments from public? Thank you to the Prince family for bringing this forward. I appreciate you being here as well. So back to council for, uh, second reading and adoption by title only. We need a motion and a second.
Motion that we accept this ordinance. Or are we, oh, we're just reading it? That's it?
Uh, no, that we conduct the second reading and adopt by title only ordinance number five four four. If you didn't do title only, you'd have to read the whole ordinance, which is not so bad in this case, but some ordinances are really long.
I make a second as so read by our mayor.
No, you're, you are.
You're making the motion.
Motion, I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, motion made.
Second that motion.
Okay, and singing. Um, sorry. Um, I need some entertainment. Alright, so the motions been made by Christopher Edgar. Seconded by Elizabeth McKay. To conduct the second reading and adoption by title only ordinance number. Five four four. And this is an ordinance, so we have to have a roll call vote.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Senator McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Scafani?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number five four four is. Uh, going to days. In, in thirty days will be a new ordinance and I'm reading it. An ordinance of the city council, city of Blue Lake modifying section one three. Point zero eight point zero six zero of chapter thirteen point zero eight of title thirteen of the Blue Lake municipal code regarding customer deposits.
Oh, you had us worried there for a second.
She's not going to read the whole thing by title only. Alright, very good. And note that there is one abstention or one absence.
Not abstention.
Okay, we have item eight. Thank you for bringing it to my attention. It's something we had talked about and now it's law. So thirty days from now, May twenty third. Alright, we are now on item nine. Well, I did ask for public input, but, uh, go ahead now.
I was just gonna say, how will this be, um, be adverse to customer, will it come as a check? Will it be credited towards, uh, future? Bills?
Interesting.
Uh, we will do it as a check.
Well, you need to come to city hall during their open hours. Nine to twelve, one to four, Monday through Friday, except holidays and, um. And then they will, uh, s- see your, um, records. Thank you.
Well, we'll actually, we'll actually be pulling all those records ourselves, so.
Are you going to be notifying customers of this?
Yeah, so this goes into effect. So it's two years of, um, on time billing.
Right.
Payments and then they'll be reimbursed up. And so our system will hold those out.
Oh, okay. Oh, so they'll automatically get a check in the mail, subtracting the thirty dollars.
No.
They don't have to wait two more years?
They do.
Oh, they have to wait two years.
Well, they've been here for two years.
It goes into effect in thirty days and based upon that you have to pay for going forward the two years.
Oh, so it isn't retroactively two years?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, we weren't, we couldn't go retroactive. Our system wasn't set up that way, so we've had to do some modifications to our accounting system, our billing system to be able to, to be able to track this, so.
Oh, okay. Alright, well.
Two years will be here before you know it.
Alright. Good questions, good clarifications. Not good news necessarily. Alright, we are now moving on to. Number nine, discussion regarding retail cannabis operation.
Sorry, that might have been public comment for the last item.
Uh, I didn't see that hand earlier.
Hello?
Hello?
Hello, this is J, J G. Hi, um, I can't speak, guys. Hello. Looking back on what some of the prior commenters have been saying about the issues with the audio. Uh, I really did want to be able to attend tonight and listen, but I have to work, so I have to attend remotely. Um, and the audio isn't just poor, it's actually incoherent. Um, and Winona did mention that it's a Brown Act violation. So I just thought I would suggest that you guys look into a separately bill two four four nine, um. It was written into law, I think in twenty twenty two.
This is not on here.
And it's.
Right, this is.
Remote, uh, meetings. And it does acknowledge that technical issues can arise. I mean, that's, that's natural, it's going to happen, but it does say there's steps that you need to take. But it does. Um, one of them is notification. You need to let the public know, uh, what the issue was and what are the steps that are being.
This is not something that's on our agenda, right?
It's not even commenting on what we just talked about.
So. Yeah.
Tony has to.
Mayor.
Just have to direct his.
Okay. Point of order, that this discussion is. You must be able to hear me because you just said you can't hear me. Okay.
Yeah.
Um. Okay, so, um, we take everything that we do here seriously. We thought that your hand was concerning the item.
Okay, continue.
Microphone typically, not very well, but if, if that was. Did that's mean that what she was saying was not accurate?
It's not her time to talk.
Yes.
Was she saying it's accurate?
No, it wasn't in, we were on a different item.
No.
Is it legal?
It's not, it's not.
No, it's not illegal.
Yeah.
The, the COVID protocol was changed by the governor. Um, it's been at least a year. And we have a disclaimer that. Live meeting logistics will be prioritized. The quality of the Zoom teleconference meeting cannot be guaranteed. Technical challenges experienced by either participant or the city will not interrupt or halt the progress of the meeting. I don't think we need to. I don't think we need to do anything like that.
Point of order, it's we're.
Yeah, point of order. Yeah, we're definitely optional.
Winona Ross, we stenching cord, I'd like to try to plug this in and move it closer to the speakers. And see if, um, the book on Zoom can hear better. I think that's going to mean that, um, we're going to lose power in this unit. And so that may mean that, um. Everybody's gonna have to dial back in or log back in. Does that make sense? No, you want to unplug this? Okay. Let's do a try. City staff and the community volunteer an hour of their time to do this when it's not a meeting and we could get this all dialed in.
They're perfectly ready for the meeting and everything works fine and then things happen, glitches happen.
This, this unit has, this device has not functioned properly for the last two meetings that we've had.
It was fine last meeting. Well, we had people commenting. People were commenting. But they were saying that they could hear. They were making comments.
So, um.
Can you hear me now? Do we have to yell?
That's still on there?
Yeah, I'm still here. Thank you.
Can you hear any better?
Can you say that again?
Can you hear us any better than before?
Well, you're standing right next to it.
It, it is better, yes, but it's a little, it's a little hard to understand.
Is this any better?
It's better, yeah.
I'm turning, I'm turning.
You're standing right next to it.
I'm just wondering if you think.
I saw the camera go. Such a disruption. Okay, we're back. Right, I hope that you can hear us a little bit better. Is it any better?
It's still very hard.
Okay, well, my mouth is as close as I can get to the microphone without.
You're not going through that.
You have to yell over there.
You're going through that.
Okay, can you hear me now?
I would like to just take just. Another thirty seconds to say, I think that this equipment is no longer functioning as it should, and I believe that we need to replace it before the next council meeting.
Okay, we can discuss that as an agenda item.
I tried to get it on the agenda this week, but you wouldn't let me.
Okay.
So.
Alright.
Um, let's keep moving forward.
Okay, we were on item nine. And this was the cannabis ordinance to allow limited retail options. Staff was asked to find sample ordinances and recommendations for consideration by the council. The city attorney, Ryan Plots, recommended reviewing the city of weed, ironically. Uh, their retail cannabis ordinance as a starting point for discussion. Staff had attached the recommended ordinance. Uh, to this and recommends a council review and provide comments at a later meeting date. So, um. Mandy, would you like to fill us in on how we got to this point?
Sure. So, um, at the last council meeting, um, we had an item on to discuss opportunities or options to. Uh, facilitate, uh, retail. Sure. So um at the last council meeting, um we had an item on to discuss opportunities or options to uh facilitate uh retail cannabis operations in the city. Uh currently, our municipal code does not allow any type of commercial or retail operations. Um, you had asked staff, uh council had asked staff to bring back some samples of other ordinances that we could look at and see if um there were uh any cities that might have language that might be reflective of uh what the city of Blue Lake might be looking for. Um, so I talked to our city attorney, Ryan Plots. Um, he represents a lot of municipalities. Um, he didn't have one locally that uh was really reflective of kind of what Blue Lake uh would be looking for, but he did uh recommend the city of weed. Um, as a starting point. Um, they do have limited retail, limited permits. Um, and so he recommended that the council uh read through this, maybe highlight things that you like, um and then we could bring forward um. We could bring forward some um recommendations at a later date um and, and go from there.
Not so much. Thank you for coming.
So the one thing that I kept looking for that unfortunately Angela Schull isn't here right now, but she had mentioned that, I think it was the city council of Eureka, I think. Where permit. People that were wanting to have a permitted um cannabis um business came to the council meetings with that. It looks like this, from what I was reading, is they just go through the, the staff as far as permitting goes. They don't need to come to directly to the council or a planning commission, for instance.
Yeah, I think um that's something that you guys could change and propose. I think you would want to limit the number and, you know, I mean, if you set up a good framework um for evaluation. Yeah.
You still need your mic to be taped.
Yeah, I like the limited, yeah, the two and one, I like that.
Yeah, two and one, small, we're a small town.
I mean, two is a lot for us.
Yeah. And you know, I mean, you're not saying that you're, I mean, you don't even know if anyone would even be interested in doing anything. You're just facilitating if there was an interest. Um, but you know, normally, you know, through your municipal code, um you permit certain activities um through your zoning regulations. And then that can go through either a process of evaluation first off by staff to see if it meets, you know, um the permit requirements or the zoning regulations. Um, that's kind of the first layer. If it meets all of those, um normally what we do is, you know, put a project forward to the planning commission. Um, staff writes a report and a recommendation. Um, so you know, that's a way you could go as well, or if you wanted to have a special commission designated to review these, you know, it's up to council how they, how you wanna format that.
Yeah, I like the idea of having an extra layer or two before it came to us, like going through the staff to make sure the permit is all filled out correctly and fees are paid. And that's another question is what would the fees be? Um, would they just be the normal business fees that we have? And then moving on to the planning commission to further massage it and then bringing it finally to us.
Yeah, so they come forward with a action plan and business plan. I don't think we should charge them any more than a normal business, though. I mean, that's all, because.
It's a normal business.
It's a normal business.
Yeah, yeah. Right, we wanna encourage small businesses. Yeah, um, so those are the only things I think I would add to this. Um.
Plus, with our small town and zoning, there isn't very many spaces that would be conducive of having anything.
No, but you do have opportunities in the Powers Creek district as new development comes forward. So you wanna think about that. We're not always gonna be limited by what we have now.
Yeah.
Um, people could also, there's um potential for some properties in town to be um, you know, renovated or knocked down and rebuilt and, you know, so. Um, I think you definitely wanna think about footprint. Um, and you know, there might be ways to look at um percentage, square footage percentage, you know, in your downtowns. Um, so that you're not getting too top-heavy. You know, if you, one of the things that we ran into with um the Powers Creek district when we wrote the opportunity zone is that the prior commissioners and council, you know, really tried to think about all the things that could go down there and tried to facilitate that through these zoning regulations. And what we found was it was almost overthought, you know, and I get it because, you know, you're trying to write this, um, these regulations to promote activities, you wanna come in, but sometimes, you know, by overriding and overthinking, you start to pen yourself in, and as new industries emerge, new ideas emerge, new um products emerge and needs emerge from your community. You start to find that you've precluded um business because it's, it's too much of a box. So, you know, so that was something that we wrote, you know, with opportunity zone is to let economics drive business a little bit more rather than us trying to, you know, come up with every scenario or idea. Um, they think in this instance, you might want to be a little bit more um restrictive in the thought process.
Yeah, the other thing I was thinking was the proximity to the school, but we really.
Laws about that.
Yeah, we really, and we really don't have to worry about that so much because our downtown and our district are both pretty far away, and I don't think there's any area around the school that's zoned commercial.
No, I mean, I, this is gonna be something that we'll have to do some additional research on. I'm not sure what the um implications are to the city as far as state mandates for regulation. I know that was one of the areas that we, you know, that really we considered um pretty indepthly when we looked at precluding commercial because there was so much regulation on the city side that we just couldn't afford to even get in the game. And it wasn't really something we, you know, we saw that, you know, this was gonna equalize at some point, and, you know, it just really wasn't something that the city decided they wanted to um risk. Um, but the invest, the upfront investment for the city for, you know, track and trace and all of these things and regulations and inspections, we just didn't have the resources for it. So I'm not sure what comes with retail. Um, I know that there's regulations with dispensaries about security and, and different things. And I don't know how that translates back to the city having to regulate um these permits. Um, so that'll be something that we'll have to look at too and bring back to you.
Yeah, and there could be existing businesses right now in town that may want to expand into this or something, but they're already there. I'm not thinking of anything specific.
Already commercially available cannabis products that you can buy at retail and resell. So if there was a small market that wanted to have a small cannabis section of sodas and beers and dummies and candy, they can, that's completely legal. It's just whether they get the proper permitting to do so.
So you're saying that if there was a store, like say the Eisners had their little store over there.
And they sold cigarettes and other stuff, and they have those proper permits, they can have some.
They can have cannabis product, products, even if we had a.
No, they can, we have to have.
We have to have this.
We have to have this. They can't just do it.
Right, but we have to lift what we did, right? Because we put it.
Yeah, we said no to everything. We did.
Something like we did here and make it so it's conducive for them.
It was hard not to make a joke. Stuff up. You cannot make it up. Um, yeah, and that was the other thing was that at the time, we had actually done this before uh marijuana was legalized in the state of California. We saw this coming, but we didn't wanna make the rules up. Now we have weeds rules.
Weed rules.
Weed rules.
Yeah, and so um, so we don't have to invent the wheel, more or less, and you know, use.
Right.
We just have to change it if we want to, because I was looking through this and I did not see anywhere where it said, first it comes to staff, then it goes to planning commission, then goes to council. And I don't know how to put that in legalese terms, but that would be.
I think we just direct.
One thing I'd like to see.
Yeah, so I think what would be helpful is if you guys um from, at the next meeting, you could bring back some um concerns, recommendations.
Okay.
And then that way, um just give everyone a little bit of time to go through it.
Yeah, cuz that was a lot.
Yeah, yeah, it's a lot. And like I said, we still have to do a bunch of research on our side on to like what, what is um the city on the hook for as far as regulation and, and permitting? Cuz it's, it, I know the, the regulatory levels and layers um get pretty thick through this process.
How much do you have to keep up on?
Yeah.
Versus like, yeah, I know county has special employees that just, that's all their job is.
Oh, yeah, well, a large city would probably be able to, to have that, whereas we can't. But if we only have two places up to two or something like that, which I don't know that that necessarily needs to be in our ordinance, but it could.
I think it should be.
I think you should limit the number.
All right. So, so those are some ideas.
Retail's in one non-retail, which is, which would just be like a storage site?
Yeah, I don't know if you really wanna get into that, and that starts to get into the commercial side, and that's where there's a lot that goes into it.
If you're not retail, there's really no benefit to the city.
Well, it's a non-storefront retail, so what even does that mean? Do they get the storage facility? That's what it said in, in this.
If it's not generating sales tax and all the different tax revenues.
Um, delivery, maybe they just, they don't sell at the front, but they deliver out back or something.
Yeah, there's no benefit to the city to have that.
Non-storefront, no more than one retail, non-storefront cannabis sales permit. So it means that it is a retail store, but you can't walk in and buy it. It might be like a delivery service, like you were saying.
Well, if it is online, then wouldn't the sales tax go to whatever, whatever location the product goes to?
It depends. I mean, there's um, there's different, the way they calculate it. There's also the, the impact side, if it's being manufactured there and then being shipped out, there's implications on that side. So I, I would have to know a little bit more about how the product is being developed.
What is? But we're not talking about um manufacturing in this. This is strictly sales.
No.
I mean, I think what I've heard council say, kind of the vision would be like a small shop, like say something like Blue Heron, you know, helps sells different tinctures and things, and maybe they have a, a cannabis section as well or something, but you know, not anything uh, not anything large, not manufacturing, not, you know, product distribution, uh, anything like that.
What about like a cafe where people go in there and, and buy?
Well, I'm pretty sure some, most of the shops will let you, but I only think there's one real cannabis cafe in.
There's one in Old Town.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know that that's what you wanna get into.
I mean, I'm opening that up.
I know.
I imagine that.
Yeah, they had them in um Amsterdam.
I mean, we have, I know, well, the one that you mentioned there, there's two now in Humboldt then. There's that, uh, there's one on the south side of Eureka, and there's one in Old Town.
Right, yeah. I, I just imagine, like, I wanna just be a little bit cautious about what the impacts are back to the city, just for regulations. Because like I said, we, we are already so short-staffed to, to, to get into a whole level of other regulatory authorities, um, con, stuff for consumption. I'm, I, I just don't know what that means.
Well, I don't either. I mean, you have.
We'll have to look into that, so.
What that is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Of course, the impact on this, the city staff is a, a large.
Yeah, we don't want it to cost the city.
Yeah, right, cuz.
It's supposed to make money for the city.
And not just that, like, if it is something that's overwhelming where it's like a monthly or access to the permitting and making sure the regulations are up to par, you're either hiring someone outside to come do that, or you're overloading our three-person staff.
Right.
We can look into, we'll just look into that side of it a little bit more, but if you guys, like I said, if you wanna take this and, and read through it and come up with ideas, or if you find other things, um, if you do some research and um that way Ryan has something to kind of pull together as well.
I have number one, limit of two retail. Number two, level permitting, staff, planning commission, council. Number three, no manufacturing, and number four, cafe with a question mark.
And number five, um, how about some projections of income to the city so that we can have some idea at what level um a business has to be successful for this to be of any benefit to the city financially? Because that's the whole purpose of looking at this, right, is potentially tax revenue to the city. So, so if it's, if we can, if we can come up with some way to make some projections on that level so that we know if we're doing this just to break even, or we're doing this to make enough money to float parks and rec or whatever. I mean, we need to have that number that, otherwise, otherwise this is just a whole, it could be a big waste of time.
Touching on that, uh, we can look at Eureka, Arcata.
Yeah.
They both have lots of cannabis dispensary. I'm pretty sure they have more taxes than just the county and state. So see what, if they are having um more of a cannabis tax to have those distributors, um, rather than just a base sales tax, cuz that is probably why they are making more money off of those things.
Well, there's a bunch of other taxes. Um.
But I'm talking about just, that would just benefit the city.
Right.
Yeah, and that's why, cuz I know Arcata, Riodell, they all have the cannabis, and they also have it's um more taxes on top of the taxes that they already pay.
Right.
So some go to the city and some go to the state.
And it's not just sales tax. They get sales tax plus cannabis sales tax.
Okay.
And what is a non-storefront retail site? I wanna know what that is, please.
Shipping?
That's what I'm thinking, but I wanna figure it out because it's in that, in weed's contract, and they, they say it's limited to one.
Right.
So I wanna see what that is. And also, yeah, impact on, like, regulatory impacts on the city.
Yeah, I don't want us to even have to.
You know, make up our.
County come out and do it? Does the city come out and do it?
Is Paradise K a non?
What did you say that was called, a non?
Something. It's called non-storefront. It's on page five.
It might be. I mean, we buy stuff from them direct.
Uh huh.
So they don't have a storefront necessarily, but you can buy products from them.
It says not storefront cannabis sales businesses may receive orders, make deliveries, and receive shipments at such times as may be specified in the conditional use permit issued there for.
I think it should be there.
So there, they just, so it's deliveries, receive shipments.
Yeah, mail order.
Mail order weed.
Well, it might be like, it might be like weed pizza delivery.
Well, do we have, we have ordinances about um permitting about uh storage units? Don't we?
What's that?
Uh, storage units, isn't there some issue about zoning those, uh, zones where those aren't permitted?
Yes, um, I think those are, yeah.
This idea. Seems like it's the same, a little bit of the same thing. All right, well, that gives us.
Hand up. Is that an old hand?
That's a new hand.
We can try it. It's always up to trying. All right, um, any other questions or comments? Let's open it up to public.
Kent, did you have something you love in your shop here? You know, I'm tired of being here, cloudy, and blah blah blah. So this way you don't have a lot of paintwork, and you know, paint will be everywhere. We can already, you know, play people with their hair.
See the mayor. Thank you, Kent. All right, um, that gives you a little something, and then we'll bring this back um at our next meeting with some ideas uh concerning some of these issues that we've brought up. So that's the direction to staff. All right, yeah, we're on page two. And this is our First Amendment auditor discussion. Council member Ed. Councilmember Edgar requested that a discussion item be added to the March Agenda to discuss the First Amendment Auditor Incident. As Councilmember Edgar was not in attendance at the March Meeting due to illness, council asked that the item be brought back to the April Meeting for Discussion. Staff is available to provide an update on s- on staff and council trainings, security and signage installations and the development of a First Amendment Audit Policy. And I know I took the online um, whiz, I guess it was, and information and uh, asked. Uh, and I hope others did as well because it's pretty uh, important to have that happen. Um, so follow through with that, it looks like the uh, office now has signage that says that of course the auditors are within their rights to be filming us at all times. However, they have to have permission from us to be on any social media such as Facebook or Twitter or X or whatever it's called. So um, I think those were looked at by the attorney and found to be um, in accordance with the law. Has there any other follow-up on, on this?
Yeah, so, um, so staff have all taken training on what First Amendments, what a First Amendment Audit is. Um, it was something obviously that we um, didn't really know anything about and didn't really understand um, kind of what was happening. But we're um, much better equipped now to, to be able to deal with a situation like this. Um, we've also installed cameras in our offices and signage um, uh, to delineate um, staff-only spaces. And um, we are in the process of developing a um, a policy um, that can be adopted through our personnel regulations. Um, so that's just in kind of the end of its draft form and that'll be back to um, to our attorney and to council at some point. Um, it's not a very long policy, but this is kind of a new arena. Um, our insurance companies are dealing with this across the board with um, different cities and um, entities. And so there's a lot more information available now and training. So um, we'll be incorporating this training into our regular staff training. And um, we probably won't make it a yearly training, but um, all new employees will be required to um, take the training so that they're also aware. Um, but other than that, I, you know, like I said, we, um, we definitely learned a lot through the experience. Um, one of the things that is, you'll see um, posted at all of our desks is a disclaimer um, stating that um, while, you know, we respect in the public's right to record, um, we don't as individuals give permission for um, to be posted on social media channels. Um, that's something that is vested within the various social media platforms' own regulations. That anyone who monetizes any type of uh, video has to have the uh, permission of the person that is being posted. Um, and obviously that didn't um, take place and that was, is a violation um, of all of those media platforms. It's just a matter of whether you um, can get the attention of the platforms to remove the videos. And they do remove them from time to time um, based upon um, those, those authorities. So, so that's something that we have um, posted at all of our desks. Um, and I think it's reasonable to, to have that. Um, but other than that, we've um, also provided additional signage um, stating that, you know, we can only have one person at a time at the counter because, you know, our, our space is very small. Um, and um, we have our hours posted and so that's kind of where we're at with that.
Yeah, and as long as they have uh, advertisements in some of these um, media outlets such as Facebook, then that is a monetary.
That's how they make money. That's what these are about. These First Amendment Audits aren't about the First Amendment, they're about making money from, from clickbait videos, so.
Alright, Christopher, did that explain for you what you had to know?
It was uh, brought up at the last meeting that I was here that we all took this, these uh, trainings and everything. And it's uh, kind of sucks that it took them to come in and do what they did to us to get these trainings and everything. But it is what it is and we got it taken care of now.
Yeah, I mean, I just now got another notice from somebody that looked at the video. Just, yeah, this just came through at six twenty-four PM.
We get them all the time now and they routinely say, click here to see the video, click here to see the video, show your friends, send them this link and it's like.
So it's all over, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, well, it's all part of being educated and we are now educated about this.
So are you asking that not more than one member of the public be in the, in City Hall at one time?
Not in City Hall, but our front counter. Um, there's times where we just get too many people trying to come in and we only really have space at the counter for one person. And especially during COVID, you know, that was a big thing, everyone, no one really feels comfortable anymore being squished into a space. Um, so we are trying to just make those accommodations. Sometimes we can bring someone back to the conference room if they want to wait, or we have a chair where people can sit. But we're trying to not have too many people come in at once, because the other issue is, it's just so loud in City Hall. So when you have multiple conversations going on, staff is on the phone, staff might be talking to someone, they might be talking to each other, then they're trying to help someone at the counter and then there's another person behind someone, it just gets to be too much. Um, so, you know, we can make accommodations, obviously, you know, if a couple comes in together or whatever. But we just are trying to um, make it more um, more of a pleasant experience to, to be at the counter, so.
Well, I wonder, um, it's a pretty sizable room, if we could move the counter back um, to accommodate two or three people, especially like when the weather's bad and people, maybe it's not.
We don't make people stand out in the weather. I mean, we can, you know, if they want to stand in the hall or something. But part of, part of this issue too is not having a bunch of people coming in or one person coming in and standing, you know, at your counter. And, you know, um, that was one of the things that we, they talked about in the policy is limiting the time um, that someone can just sit there and film you all day with, you know, and interrupting business. And so that was one of the recommendations was just limiting the number of people at your counter so that if someone else comes in and someone is taking up the space because they want to videotape you for an hour. You know, we have to be able to do business, you know, so being able to have a legitimate sign that says, you know, we allow one person at the counter so that we can properly um, you know, conduct business, you know, then I think that's a reasonable thing to have. But we don't, like, so we don't make people stand out in the rain or the cold, you know, we accommodate people as best that we can.
Alright.
Okay, um, it seems there's really no uh, action on that item, so then we'll.
Hand up, is that an old hand?
That's a new hand, I think.
Alright, um, we're discussing our First Amendment Auditor. Um, did you have a comment to make on that caller?
Ken, would you want to speak?
Thank you.
Did you say that um, our city attorney is also talking, you're talking to our city attorney about all this stuff? And when you said something about the insurance being impact, it means insurance being impacted or the assurance, insurance is um, participating somehow in?
Sierra, so Sierra is um, our insurance provider and they are helping to educate um, communities on these issues. Um, they've had several um, member cities that have had these types of interactions. Um, some of them have ended up um, becoming a lot more confrontational than ours. Um, some of them have been, become physical, um, the, they've had to defend some city employees um, over actions related to these um, instigations. And so they're taking this very seriously and educating um, cities on how to um, you know, conduct themselves and how to protect themselves. Um, and actually the training that you guys all, that we've all participated in was recommended by Sierra. So this is something that they're working on, they have draft policies that they're also working on. So um, these, these instigations are taking place across the nation. Um, and so it's um, a learning curve, but we're, they're trying to get ahead of it.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Thank you for bringing it up.
Yeah. So the staff, uh, directing staff is appropriate, sounds like continuing on as long as we are within the law. That's the important thing. Okay, um.
Oh, sorry, I had one more question. When you said that there's a bunch of cameras in City Hall now.
Mm-hmm.
You're just, you have cameras that are running all the time to um, video everything that's going on in, in City Hall, is that it?
They are running um, during specific hours and then they are set to come on um, based upon motion um, after hours.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns from council?
Um, so are, is the, is whatever's videoed on those cameras subject to PRAs?
Um, I would assume it's a record, so I'm, I'm not sure how, how that works. Um, but I would assume there's some mechanism under, under that to, to do a PRA.
And um, okay, so how many are there?
Uh, there are three.
Are they mostly in the front area?
Uh, two in the front, um, and then one in the back catching all the entrance points and exits and the windows.
Okay.
And I know you guys received tons of emails as well. We received a lot of threats. Um, a lot of threats of people come, that were um, going to come and vandalize the buildings and city staff's vehicles and, you know, all kinds of things. So uh, we felt that it was imperative to have those cameras in place as well.
I agree.
Okay, anyone, any other concerns? Okay, alright, we um, are moving on then to item eleven, the council budget training discussion. Uh, council member Scaffoni has requested, requested staff to conduct a budget training in preparation for the upcoming fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget discussions. The city accountant is available to meet with council members and recommends that this training take place outside of a council meeting setting. Due to the accountant's work schedule, staff recommends that council members that are interested in receiving additional budget training work with the city clerk to schedule a time that meets everyone's scheduling needs. It's possible for two council members to meet with the accountant without triggering the need to agendize the training as a meeting.
Yeah, so talking with Scott, um, his, his schedule is kind of all over the place. Um, he really didn't want to um, do a training during a council session um, just because it's restrictive and um, the timeframe. Um, so he had asked if um, if council would consider, you know, making um, setting up some time where you guys could meet with him, um, either in pairs or individually. I don't know how many people are interested in getting training on um, on the accounting, but he felt that it would be more flexible and um, a better use of his time if um, if this training took place, you know, through this, the method that he's recommending.
I think there might be a misunderstanding about my request. Um, I wasn't necessarily requesting training um, for understanding budgets in general, but um, having time to review our next budget and to fully understand and have a full presentation about our, our, our upcoming budget.
We will have that, yeah.
But we didn't have it last year, so that's why I'm requesting it this year.
Well, I think it could be helpful if, because our budget doesn't change much from year to year, we have the, basically the same funds, um, a lot of the same revenues coming in. I think you could spend some time with Scott to go over our current existing budget and it's going to give you um, a really good picture of what the next budget going forward is. Um, we just don't have a lot of changes in that budget, you know, we might pick up a grant here or there, or some projects might, you know, go from a planning stage to a construction stage or implementation. But as far as our main funds, um, they really are pretty stagnant. Um, so I think there's value in looking at what we have now, we'll probably present it in much the same format. Um, uh, Scott's been working for a number of years to kind of get the budget to a point where it's, you know, it's kind of plug and play, you know, like I said, because everything is, is pretty routine and regular. Um, so I think there's value in um, maybe working through what we have, if you want to do that. Cause we do, it does take Scott quite a while to put the budget together. Um, once we give him numbers and he starts feeding it into the system, um, it takes, it takes a while and we usually end up running right up against the deadline. Um, we haven't, in the last six, seven years, we haven't had to do any um, continuing resolutions or anything. We've been able to make our um, our deadlines for implementation. Um, but it is a lot, it's a big haul. Um, you know, we just don't have, we don't have a, an accountant that's on all the time, so it makes it a little bit tough. So I don't know if that's helpful or not, but um, I think there's a lot that can be learned just through what we, what we currently have.
Well, I think maybe what can happen is any city councilperson that fills the need to get more information about our budget and look at it in more detail can arrange a meeting with Scott. I personally have been through a number of these now that I'm pretty familiar with how that they go. But if anyone else feels the need, then I think that's completely up to councilperson to do that.
Elizabeth, are you interested in doing that?
Yeah.
And Chris?
Oh, no, thanks.
We don't know if Angela is interested, but if the two of you, you know, want to work out something.
Yeah, I think I can meet with Scott sometime.
Okay.
I just think it's important that the council understands um, what we're signing off on in June when it comes to us and um, there's just so much uh, detail in there. And I've spent quite a bit of time on it and spent some time with Scott. Um, and there's still some concepts I still have a little bit of trouble with. Just cash balances and this and that and the ins and the outs. Um, those are just a little hard to wrap your brain around because it's not as simple as you would expect it to be or straightforward. But um, but just in general, just, just understanding where the money's coming from and where it's going. Um, you know, I feel like we need more time than a council meeting to really, um, to really get that and to be making responsible decisions. So.
Alright, well, um, it sounds like you're interested in it. And Elizabeth, I'm not sure about Angela, but as long as there's just two of you, you, you can meet.
Or if Angela's interested, we, we just agendize that work session and could have it here and public could attend, is that correct?
Scott really didn't want to do that.
Yeah, no, it's something that we should just do, meet with him and have him um, explain. And then when we come, we understand what we're looking at. That's what he wants, is my.
Yeah, that was more, he just really didn't want to work under the framework of an agendized meeting and, you know, all of what comes with that. I think he might have been, I don't know, maybe he had attended a meeting and was a little bit scared. But, and he just didn't think it was flexible enough to be able to really sit down and answer questions and so.
Yeah, I would rather meet with him, not in the meeting personally.
I think you'll get more from it spending some time and then he can pull things and he can show you. Like I said, the budget we're going to give you this next fiscal year is going to be very similar to the budget you got this fiscal year. You know, there's going to be some projects that are moving, you know, out that have been completed, there's new projects coming in, but our core funds are all pretty much the same. You know, the revenues come from the same place, expenditures go to the same place. Um, it's just not an overly complicated um, city budget, honestly. I mean, what's. I mean, what's complicated is fund accounting is complicated. Fund accounting is not easy. It's a whole different type of accounting, you know, principles that are applied to fund accounting than just your average, you know, your household budget or, you know, something that you would run through QuickBooks. So that is, that is where it becomes a little bit more, um, of a complicated feature. So if he would be, just have more time to be able to answer your questions, I think.
All right, um, any further discussion on this item? And we'll proceed as, uh, as we've discussed. We are on item 12, council correspondence, League of California Cities Legislature. And in our packets were some of the upcoming bills to consider taking action on. There was many concerning organized retail theft, addressing, um, the property loss damage, addressing cargo theft, eliminating the sunset date for the crimes, that kind of thing. Then there were some labor relations, um, issues, some sales tax, housing. And, um, is there anything you wanted to add before I get into, this was the last correspondence, looks like it was from Mr. Wickheiser, who addressed us earlier concerning Lemonade Day. And he's part of the Dream Maker Project of the Ink People. And so he was promoting that idea, which we've passed as a proclamation. So was there anything you were, um, particularly interested in us knowing about as far as legislation coming up?
Yeah, I think there's going to be some interesting, um, stuff as we get closer to the election cycle. But right now, these are some of the priority, um, that the league is working on. And I anticipate that we'll be bringing back, um, some letters, um, and some authorizations to take positions on a few items. So I know there's, um, some specific ones that Elizabeth is aware of, um, from her meetings with the league, that are going to be real important for all cities to, to, um, take positions on. But we just haven't, I think they're gonna, that will start ramping up as we get closer to November, so.
Yes, and our next League of Cities meeting is in Rio Del on May 3rd, Friday, and I'm planning to go to that.
I'll be there.
It's one to five.
I have to leave early though.
Yeah, oh, okay, no, I can make it for the whole time. But anyway, that, um, that'll be more information for us to garnish on this. Okay, um, if there's no further discussion on item 12, simply our correspondence. We are now on 13, which is our consent agenda, and we have only one item, the warrants and disbursements. Did anyone want that pulled?
No.
For discussion? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to pass the warrants and expenses. So moved?
I'll second.
Motion made by Elizabeth Kay, seconded by Elise Gaffoni to approve our consent agenda. Any further discussion from council? Anything from public? Back to council for the vote. Halls in favor, say aye.
Aye. So you're missing one.
We're missing her in your.
Somebody left.
That we, um, we have three.
All right, well.
Still a quorum.
Rita too, so. Two accents. Okay, we are now on item 13, reports of council and staff. Since Christopher's not here at the moment, I'll just go with, um, you, Elise, did you attend some meeting?
I did. I attended the Redwood Coast Energy Authority meeting yesterday. We had a special meeting because we wouldn't have a quorum for our regular meeting. So like I mentioned earlier, the, the e-bike voucher program is, is off and running and doing really well. And that's kind of an exciting, um, item. Also, um, we, um, voted yesterday to go forward with a second phase of the, um, Foster Clean Power, um, purchase agreement. So there's, um, there's a facility being built at the Foster Avenue, um, the old mill site in Arcata. And it's going to have, um, seven megawatts of solar power and battery storage. And so, um, Redwood Coast Energy Authority is buying all of their power. So that's kind of exciting. That's going to be, it's, it's a 20-year, um, it's a 20-year, um, purchasing agreement. So that's kind of exciting.
Who's creating the power?
It's a company called, um, well. They're calling it Foster Clean Power. And I'm honestly, that's not, I don't know that that's the, um, that's the facility name and the, um.
It's on Foster.
It's on Foster, yeah. Over by, um, where James Road, just, it's just west of where James Road comes into Foster.
I remember that property very well.
Yeah. And, uh, it's Renewable America, that's who it is.
Renewable.
So anyway, that's kind of exciting. We're going to have some more locally generated power. And also RCA, um, just, uh, got an award for a $3 million grant to, to, uh, create, um, solar generation and battery, um, storage, uh, facilities for 16 different, um, entities and fire departments. And this, this program is about, um, creating resiliency in, during times of, um, power outages and nat- natural disasters, times where, where, um, the grid might be disrupted. So it's an energy resilience and fire services, um, program. So RCA is going to be doing all the design permitting and facilitating the construction of all these units. And then they will be handed over to the, um, to the 16 entities. And I'm just going to really quickly read those entities. It's kind of exciting because Blue Lake Volunteer Fire Department is one of them. Uh, the Yurok Tribe Fire Department, Hoopaw Tribe Volunteer Fire Department, Karuk Department of Natural Resources, Telegraph Ridge Volunteer Fire Department, Honeydew Volunteer Fire Department, Fruitland Ridge Volunteer Fire Department, Floric Volunteer Fire Department, Orleans Petroleum, Salmon Creek, uh, Bridgeville, Breslin, Whitethorn, Willow Creek and West Haven. So, um, all those folks are going to be benefiting from this grant and, um, and kind of exciting.
Yeah, that's very exciting.
There you go. That's all I got.
Yeah, that was the only meeting you went to?
It is. Chris went to, um, my other meeting, which was the, um,
Yes, I have.
Parks and Rec, because I wasn't well at the time.
Oh, would you like to report on that, Christopher? Okay, Parks and Rec, Christopher.
There's a bunch of new people there. Uh, we have Jan Henry.
Yeah.
And she is the new chairperson, uh, who everybody knows her, that, well, not everybody, I guess. She worked at Parks and Rec years ago. She's great.
He was the Parks and Rec director.
Yeah. And, um, then we have Chris, I don't, I can't remember his last name, but he's, uh, on our board and he was a Parks and Rec director, what?
Fire.
Yes, he was here earlier.
Yeah.
Yeah, he was a Parks and Rec director in New Mexico and now he's on the commission. He's on the board.
Oh, good.
Yeah, um, they mentioned something about the, uh, beer league wanting to play, um, softball on Annie Mary Day again, like they used to.
Really?
But they want to do it on Sunday, but that's where they all, they put the vendors.
That's where all our vendors are now.
Talking about that. They want to do it on Saturday, but they're trying to get them to do it on Saturday. Get Out and Play Day, they're trying to set up something here in town, um, on Saturday, July 20th, to do a Get Out and Play Day, kind of promote it for local kids and people.
And people.
And regular people, the older people. Not just, not just older people, all the peoples. Yeah, because they were talking about doing like an elderly, uh, pickleball tournament and.
Don't, are you looking at me?
I was looking at all of you. Oh, God, nevermind.
I represented. Yeah, pickleball is big and not just with the elderly.
No, me, me and the wife play it all the time. It's great.
There you go.
Yeah. It's a fun game. But yeah, any suggestions are more than welcome for those events.
Okay, thank you for attending that meeting. Okay, um, so on the 11th, I attended the Humboldt Waste Management Authority, um, meeting and most of it was taken up with the fiscal year 2425 budget, which we went through. And we will have our final budget in May. That was just the draft. And we discussed SB 1383, which is all about processing organics. And we have an extension of up to a year on our grant because we don't actually have that ready yet. And then we moved on to standing board member reports. And I always like to report on our yard waste day in Blue Lake. And then the update from our executive director was that Fortuna is still wanting to join our, um, her organization as a board member. And the director met with the Fortuna City Manager last month. They would add about 6,000 tons over the year to the total. And then in January, there'll be a zero waste, January, there was a Zero Waste Humboldt gave a presentation. So that was HWMA on Thursday, the 11th, and then on Thursday, the, what was that?
January?
I know, January 11th, Zero Waste Humboldt gave a presentation. I guess was somebody, somebody told about that, the report. Okay, then the next meeting I went to was Humboldt County Association of Governments. And we discussed Bike Month as well and proclaimed May as Bike Month. And there's a lot of activities going on in Eureka concerning that as well. And, um, we, um, approved our overall work program for 2324 with a budget amendment that we had to make for the last year. And then we approved the overall work program for the coming year, 2425. And then we also talked about the Low Carbon Transit Operations Program, um, which we, um, have funds for. And what else did we have that day? We're having, um, Ride Humboldt, Humboldt Transit Authority Report from Alex Dillman on Ride Humboldt, which is a, uh, day and I think it's the same weekend as the city. Yeah, it is. It's May 3rd and 4th, um, where they're riding around on our transit system and getting photos of people. And because they're starting this new program called Ride Humboldt, it's a whole, um, idea to get people to ride the bus more often. A group called Studio Six is coming out to film people on that. So that's about all I have with Humboldt County Association of Governments. And other than that, I don't think I have anything else. Go ahead.
Well, Elizabeth. Um, economic development was canceled and Arts and Heritage was canceled. But I did attend the, um, 31st League of Women Voters Luncheon.
Yeah, I saw your picture.
You saw my picture?
Your picture.
Oh, on Facebook.
Oh.
Oh, right, yeah, that was so funny.
We matched, yeah, we're both red and black.
Um, yeah, because I was like, gosh, I was feeling like I was dressed for winter. So, yeah, it was really, it was really well attended. It's an amazing event. And, um, I think most of the city of Arcata was there. There were a lot of people there. And I would highly recommend that people go next year to it. So, yeah, there were some great speakers, uh, Lori Dangler and then Jennifer Savage. Um, and they gave out some awards to the, um, the zoo, the people who had the, um, the zoo, they've been working on it for, I think, 20 years, um, that raised all the money for the zoo and they just dissolved their thing because they have done.
Foundation.
Yes, they have finished what they set out to do. So, um, so they're done. He's retiring. Yeah. So that was really neat and, uh, yeah, it was a great event. There'll be a lot of interesting people to, to talk with there, so I highly recommend it. And, um, yeah, that's it.
So I just want to announce that this, um, Saturday from 2:00 to 7:00 is the Blue Lake Block Party in downtown Blue Lake. I know the museum is having, uh, plants out and, uh, that kind of thing. It's also the same morning of the Rhododendron Parade. Um, and then also to announce, it looks like on May 18th, Saturday, we're going to have our, the museum opening from 1:00 to 4:00, starting that day and probably going through October.
You said this Saturday for the block party?
Yeah, the 27th.
I haven't seen anything about that.
It's been, it's been advertised on the, on Facebook, on a community news site. It's mostly going to be in front of the Lager Bar, but there's going to be, that's where the fire, yeah. It's really May Day. It's celebrating May Day.
Yeah, when you said the museum was going to do their thing, I thought, oh, that's something different.
Yeah, well, we are going to have another, I know what you're thinking of, our plant sale. That's not going to happen until June. But this is, we are going to have plants that day because one of our members bought, propagates jade plants like crazy. So she has a bunch of, if you're interested in jade plants. Okay, um, moving on then to city manager report. We have Mandy's report in our packets. The sheriff contract negotiations, uh, they've been decreased thanks to our ad hoc committee meeting. By 45,000, we have Measure Z, um, decisions to still find out about. We asked for 35,000. They've requested that it go down to 30,000. We'll see how we do on that.
When is the meeting again?
I believe it's May 7th.
Yeah, that's what I have, May, May 7th. Measure Z Board of Supervisors. And as soon as you can find out a little more how closely the time would be so that we could be there for that, I would like to be there. And then concerning Park and Rec, the State Park PerCapita Grant, um, uh, the majority of the work has been done of this $177,000 grant, but we do have a new roof coming on Prash Hall.
Let me ask you a question about that grant. I noticed that, um, so this grant's been ongoing for like two or three years. So, um, and I noticed that, um, other municipalities got the same grant and the same amount of money. So I'm wondering how often, I mean, is this a grant that comes along every so often or how does that work?
No, this was, um, like a park set aside that came through the state. We've never seen this funding before. Originally, we were supposed to get 200,000. You weren't supposed to, every city was supposed to get an allocation. And based upon population, um, it gets prorated. But the minimum amount was supposed to be 200. And so we budgeted for the 200 originally and then it came in. It took quite a while to get the money and then when it did come in, we all got 177, which is great. Because it's, it's the type of money that you never get this type of money. It was to maintain or upgrade or build new facilities. You never get maintenance funds for facilities. And so even though it wasn't traditional maintenance in the sense of like, you know, like paying for someone to go mow the lawn, but it, you know, maintenance for, um, impacts for deferred maintenance during COVID. So if you had, you know, up, upgrading your sprinkler systems, putting the roof on, all of these. So, yeah, it was really a, um, a windfall for the city and it's really helped us.
We're not going to see it again in other.
We will not, I mean, I would love to see it again. I've never seen funds like this before.
Program that would come along every five years or something.
And maybe they will, maybe this, maybe it'll be on the state's radar because I think it's made some huge impacts to cities.
And then moving on, um, Park and Rec, continuing the Town Square Grant, um, I think caught everybody by surprise, but it's going to look great after it's finalized with PG&E coming in.
Yeah, she was really upset.
Yeah, she was very upset.
Would have been nice like a week before to say, hey, this is going to happen, like maybe even a sign right on it because not everybody's on Facebook or whatever.
We just got all the signs put up.
Yeah, that was good. Um, and then the bike park, um, it looks like they're preparing to remove the winterization materials and getting on with working on that, library improvements, um, pretty much done except some additional concrete work and replacement of the door.
About about 200,000. So did the block grant, the block grant, grant is funding this entire thing?
Yes, it's, um, it's not a block grant. It's PI funds. It's program income funds through the Community Development Block Grant. But, um, these are funds that, um, the city has, but hasn't been able to use them for projects. So this was, uh, basically this is an improvement to county facility, to the library and not to a city facility. So, so yes, the grant is. Um, so, so yes, the grant is paying for all of the improvements. And they're all um, part of the accessibility improvements.
So the Community Development Block Grant Program?
It's Program Income. It's so it's a different, there's, you can apply for CDBG. CDBG has different levels of funding and this is the Program Income side.
Okay, but then for the, the siding and whatnot, we approved up to sixty thousand dollars for that additional repair?
It was the same, it's the same program. It was just an additional scope of work. Um, and we ended up not needing the fifty thousand. Um, we were able to do it within budget. Um, but we may be going back to see if we can do an amendment. Um, because we just had a code change. So the new CASP report came out and they're wanting us to do some additional ADA improvements because the code that we did the original project under has now changed. And there's some new requirements. And so um, the, the ADA inspectors are recommending that we make those improvements. So we're working with CDBG um, to see if we can use those funds to make those improvements as well.
Okay. That's not attached. Just grab it, grab it, grab it from underneath.
Carefully. Yeah. Thank you. Yeah.
So is this, is this um, part of the, the CBDG um, fund? Is that the same, that money comes out of that when like back in the old days when we used to loan money to homeowners?
Yes.
Okay, um, I'm going to move on to city infrastructure, the Truck Route Study, Design and Construction. It's currently out to bid with a bid date in early May. June start-up date for that uh, project, which is, will affect the Greenwood Avenue um, Hoax. Including ADA Compliance Sidewalks, Raised Crosswalks, Flashing Pedestrian Crossing, a new pavement signage and striping. And that was a one point six million dollar project. And then, of course, we had the plan that was just presented to us tonight. Um, FEMA Water Tanks Funding, the city submitted a funding project to the FEMA Hazarded Mitigation Program to replace our two Redwood Water Tanks. We've received uh, Phase One funding. And once the portion of the project is complete, the city will be funded through FEMA for the removal and installation of two new water tanks. Ongoing Greenwood.
Um, I mean, we're in the design permitting and engineering phase right now um, through CalOES. And then um, once that is complete, then we'll go to construction. So um, I don't, it's probably two years, I think.
So this is something that'll go out to bid then? Okay, keep us informed on that. That's good information. Um, and then the Greenwood Avenue Water Lateral Replacement Project will be coordinated with the work that will be occurring on Greenwood. And June, is that correct? Um, Housing Element Update, um, the state has received the final submittal and directed the city to pursue adoption. Yeah, staff's completed the final draft. The city planner is working on the environmental review and will be presenting the plan to the Planning Commission and then the City Council review and adoption. And then HCD Representatives to address implementation of various initiatives. Having a compliant housing element allows the city to participate in a range of programs and funding opportunities. Okay, anything else from?
Um, so the power plant, the um, the court ruled in the city's favor on the um, on our filings. And the sheriff served the eviction notice um, a couple of weeks ago. And we've taken possession of the property as of, I believe it was Tuesday? No, Tuesday or Wednesday of last week. Um, so we're, Ryan has us going through a process of inventorying the site. And then there's a process that we'll go through with Blake Power. They've, are putting in a request to remove items off the site. That's now under our control to control that process. Uh, Mike and I did a tour of the site on Friday, did an inventory, took lots of pictures. And I think the recommendation will be to uh, put the project out to bid um, for salvage and removal and cleanup. And we've already had several contractors um, contact us who are interested in the project. Um, so you know, really the goal is to get in and get the site cleaned. Um, there's a lot, um, the main building is abs, is absolutely trashed. But the site's not that big. Um, it's manageable. And I think, you know, I think we can do a good job at getting um, someone on board to be able to hopefully salvage it out. Hopefully there's enough value in what's there. Um, Ryan's in conversations right now with Blake Power to talk about um, their request to remove items. Um, we need to make a, a differentiation between um, personal effects and um, fixed assets. And so Ryan's going to come out next week and tour the site, um, because there's a lot.
Attorney?
Yeah, so he can get a better feel for what's a fixed asset versus um, personal property. Because so much of the equipment and stuff is affixed to foundations and it's all interconnected. So um, so the attorneys will be giving us a recommendation on that. And we'll bring back that, you know, the whole thing to council. Once we kind of have a game plan, um, have a better feel for the legal process and just kind of what the rights of the city are at that point.
The chips, is there any idea of what's happening with those?
Um, I mean, that'll be the other side that will, you know, be working to get rid of. Um, I know Blake Powers expressed interest in removing those as well. And so. So we have a process that we have to work through legally to be able to, you know, we can't, it, it's not just like the cities yet. Um, so there's still legal implications and um, you know, Blake Power have as part of this.
So part of the court ruling was that they were allowed to go in to get their, whatever they.
Yeah, that's part of the normal eviction process. Um, you know, that there's, there's abilities for the city to um, recoup um, assets and um, debt through the sale and forfeiture of certain items. But there's, there, I think the problem is we need a good valuation of what's there. Um, because there's, there's a lot that doesn't have any value. And there's maybe a few things that do have some value. And so the goal will, I would assume, um, would be to leverage the things of value to get rid of the things that don't have value as well. So um, we're, we're not inheriting a gold mine.
Right, right. We're inheriting a lot, but it's not a complete headache.
It's not, and it's, it was time, it was time to get it before something worse happened. Um, there's a lot of vandalism that's taken place. The, the main building is just completely destroyed. So it's, we're lucky, I guess, that we have, there's not more issues. So it's good that we got control of it. We um, have changed the locks, um, signage is going up. Um, we've contacted the insurance agents, uh, to make sure that we um, you know, get it on our policy and protect the city. So.
And all the holes in the fence are fixed?
We're, we're starting that process as well, so.
So is there um, an opportunity for the, for the council to tour the site?
Yeah, I think after Ryan goes through and makes his determination on kind of where we're at with the process, um, then we can see about getting you guys in. Um, I mean, there's definitely some safety concerns out there, um, some stuff that we want to make sure is um, completely addressed. Um, we were told that um, a lot of the fuels and chemicals and things have been removed, but there is still quite a bit out there that we're not really sure what the status is. So we need to have environmental health come in and make some assessments. So we're trying to kind of limit the exposure. It's, there's a lot out there that um, that I'm not really sure what it is. But um, once we get a good handle on it, make sure that it's a safe site, we can definitely make, you know, get council out there to tour it.
So just want to mention that um, Humboldt Sawmill Company, um, the power plant is interested in some of the assets on the property.
Yeah, we've been contacted by a few um, different companies. Like I said, the problem that we're, the problem that you have is you have a lot of um, a lot of salvage, a lot of trash. And so like I said, it's really going to be leveraging the value to um, get rid of the waste as well. So I think putting together a comprehensive package for this, so we get people bidding on it and we get, you know, reasonable, you know, apples to apples types of evaluations for costs, I think is in the city's best interest.
The, the general manager, Humboldt Sawmill has gave me um, the names of two different salvage operations that um, they've used in the past. So I can pass those on to you.
Sure, that'd be great.
All right, thank you for that update. Any other council questions or concerns? Anyone from public? Okay, um, we are now on the financial report. And we have uh, our packet including the financial report for July one, twenty twenty-three to July two, I'm sorry, January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And um,
For March.
Or March thirty-first, thank you. And it looks like, um, are we going to need to do a budget amendment at all this year?
Um, yeah, we probably will.
Okay, so that'll be coming back next month. Are there any questions or concerns about the financial report?
No, I did want to, um, I just noted on, on page twelve that we got more money for our supplemental law enforcement services grant than we were expecting by almost, was it seven thousand? So that's nice. Anyway. Lots of numbers at times.
Yes.
We're more or less on track. It looks like sewer and water are um, sort of holding steady. We're actually, I could be wrong about this, but um, with depreciation, we're actually um, not in the red, I think. Is that right, Mandy?
What's that?
Including depreciation and sewer and water, we're actually still in the black.
Um, we're trend, we're definitely trending in the right direction. And um, it's, it's, is somewhat mirroring what the rate study had projected. So uh, you know, we're digging ourselves out of a hole. But um, we're, we're definitely trending in a direction that's supporting O and M. Which we weren't before, so.
What's O and M?
Um, operations and maintenance.
So this, I think, I think this might be the first time that we're not in the, in the red. Um, on, on funds sixty and seventy. I'd have to go back and notice that for sure. That's all I got.
Okay, anyone else on the financial report? All right, um, we are now on, I think we should, should talk about future agenda items. I mean, I did notice there wasn't an approval of agenda at the beginning.
We noticed that too.
I noticed that, uh, you know, about halfway through there. So we need to put that in there. But um,
Motion to approve the agenda.
Yeah, well, it's too late. All right, um, but I would like to do the future agenda items before the closed session. And I'm not sure if we want to do the closed session because we are not a full council. But that's up to the.
Oh, she had her say. It's just written up what everybody.
Okay, all right, well, let's, let's.
I don't think it's an issue.
Okay, then let's do that. But let's, uh, I would suggest that we go through any future agenda items now.
Hanging in there.
Not everyone, we're still here.
Yeah, go home and get on Zoom and get frustrated.
So for future agenda items, I have the ca- cannabis ordinance, um, the new, new camera.
Um, can we just forego that being another um, uh, another month down the road and just buy a new camera?
Oh.
Yes. I'm, I'm, I've gotten dozens of messages from people saying it was just like this last month. So we're two months in a row with no audible audio. And um, we just need to replace this piece of equipment.
Okay.
And Justin, do you have any recommendations? Um, you've done a little research, I know. Do you know of something that might be appropriate?
Honestly, um, the system that we have currently, we have enough equipment now. We didn't need to get the training. It takes the time before it's crunch time to plug everything in, make everything work. And it will work. It's just, we don't have the time to figure it out.
Right, but, but, sorry.
We can split the audio. We can do everything we need to do. Use those microphones through Zoom. It's just, we didn't have the, the time to set it up and test it properly yet.
Right, but there, there appears to be something wrong with this unit. So we should have a unit that is a standalone unit.
We're going to transition over to Justin's setup.
I think that's a good goal, and I think we are. But I think that there, there may be times where there's a technical problem with a full setup. And so it would make sense to have a fallback position that is functional, that we know is functional.
This is just future agenda items. I know, you're right. We're just discussing whether we should even.
I think you should go into City Hall and talk. I don't know. As a council, it's not on the agenda.
Right.
It's late and.
Right, okay, so um, any other future agenda items? The budget will be coming up in May, I'm assuming. And budget amendments?
Yeah, we're gonna, that's what I think Scott's shooting for, um, is to get a draft in May. I mean, our goal is always, we always try and get May. And then it seems like we're right there with two meetings in June to.
Yeah.
I'm going to be gone for most of the month of June. Just FYI.
Okay, so nobody else gets sick.
It seems like even if we don't have a final agenda proposal in May, maybe we could be looking at that draft. So everybody can see it.
We might have an extra meeting in May if we need to, if you're going to be gone most of June. All right, um, and we will have our agenda meeting, ad hoc meeting, hopefully, for the next meeting. All right, um, now we are at closed session pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five seven. A closed session will be held to conduct an employee performance evaluation for the position of City Manager. Do we want to have just the council and then?
Yeah.
And then bring Mandy in, or are we? Oh, okay. So it sounds like we're going to have, um, we're going to go into closed session with just the council. And then we'll notify you and we want just Mandy to come back in. But it'll just be the council.
Can we let everybody else in the video equipment go home?
Probably, yeah. Okay, so we need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Government Code. Motion made by Elizabeth Kay, seconded by Christopher Edgar to go into closed session, session pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five seven. Any further discussion from council? Anything from public? Back to council for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're in closed session.